...fifteen tax budget. For those in the audience, there are copies out front. I'm gonna make a couple of comments about the tax budget first. And then I will give citizens an opportunity to make any comments they'd like to.
Can I make one clarification?
Sure.
I think it's 2016, is that right?
Yeah, did I say 2015?
Well, it does say.
We just wanted to correct.
Oh. Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, it is. On the agenda, you're correct. The tax budget is the 2016 tax budget. Council and citizens, as you are aware, we have a general fund and out of the general fund, we take care of various expenses. And those expenses are things like salaries for council, the mayor, money for police, part of the funding for police, garbage collection, some lands and buildings, some financial expenses that we have. And then we have special funds and those funds are numbered. The money that goes into those funds can only be used for those intended purposes. Things like the recreation fund, the police operating fund, and the fire equipment levies or are special funds that taxpayers might be most familiar with. And let me just give you a little historical perspective. Most of the work on the tax budget really happens in the general fund. And like I said, the general fund is used to pay those types of expenses as well as transfer money out to other funds that may be underfunded and need additional monies. So in 2013, the general fund revenue was $2,026,000. And in 2014, we lost monies from the estate tax and it declined 14% to $1,781. And for the purposes of discussion tonight, I'm rounding to the nearest thousand. Our current estimate for 2015 is $1,764,000. So we're still seeing additional decline. And then for 2016, our estimate is $1,728,000. And the biggest impact on that is the decline in real estate values. So we're looking at $1,728,000 as far as revenue into the fund. And if you take the fund and you look at it and say, where does that money come from? Where does that $1,728,000 come from? About 60% of that comes from the income tax. So $1,050,000 would come from the income tax. $348,000 or about 20% would be the property tax. Fines, licenses, permits, things that fall into that category are about $119,000. And that's 7% of our budget. And then we'll call the all other catch-all category miscellaneous, $211,000 is 13% of the budget or of the revenue into the general fund. So I think the big takeaway here is that income tax carries 60% of the general fund and that's a very important determiner of what we're able to do or not do. Like I said, the general fund revenue is down 2% in the tax budget that you see in front of you. Expenses are up about $30,000 overall or about 2% from projected expenses in 2015. One of the things that we're gonna have to consider is garbage collection. Right now, in the current budget you have in front of you is garbage collection at[269.72][269.75]$224,500. And we need to consider no longer paying for this out of the general fund due to the general fund year-end balance. And if you look at, if we project out because we're transferring money out to pay for non- voted debt and as we have less apartments where we're getting revenue and we have less apartments or property to sell, we're gonna have to subsidize that non-voted debt fund in future years. If you look out and nothing is done in our income and our expenses stay absolutely flat, in 2019, our general fund year-end balance is actually negative. And so the longer we wait, the bigger the pain's gonna be in the future. So this is an area that we need to look hard at. So I think that's our biggest challenge with this budget. We have refinanced all the debt that we can. And like I said, even with flat income and flat expenses, if we don't do something soon, we will be negative, obviously, and end of the year, the negative fund balance is not acceptable. And that means that our police would get no raises, there would be no increases for anything with the fire department, there would be no salary increases for staff. So we talked a little bit about this at the retreat as far as what we look like. You know, 2016 will be a tight year, but if we don't do something sooner rather than later, we will have pain that's very hard-felt by the citizens. So that's my overview of the budget. So now if any citizens would like to make. Right after the citizens.
Okay.
So if any, and we have, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Matt and Yvonne for all their work on this budget. And I asked Matt if he would be here this evening to help with any questions. The answer might be on the tip of his tongue or it might be maybe researching it back to folks. So first, I'll open it up to any citizens that wanna make any comments. If you want to podium, state your name, your address, and your comments.
Hi, Diana Harrison, Coleridge, 23, Iloha Drive. And first, I want to thank you guys for the hard work on the budget and it looks real good. I also want to thank council for this time making the public hearing a different evening than the vote on the budget. I think that that is a tremendous asset for us. In the past, we've always voted the same day as the hearing. Couple of questions I have. Just got new updated ones here, so it might take me a moment.
Diana, just for your information, the totals didn't change. We had just put a number in the wrong category, so.
Yeah. Well, there were slight changes in numbers, but nothing significant. But the bottom line has changed by $50,000.
I'm not sure, okay, I'm not sure which version.
So there were some changes somewhere.
Okay.
Okay, so let me just go through here. I only have a couple of questions. On the special revenue for recreation, that we have is recreation personnel services, personal services. They have $10,000 in there for this year and $5,000 for 2016. What type of personal services are we charging to recreation? We don't have any employees in that department.
We are planning to charge the salaries of our certain employees if they're working in the parks, the wood grass there or of the sidewalks.
Correct.
And if they're doing those type of things, that's when we would charge their salaries for those hours worked to the.
Okay, 'cause we've never done that in previous years. Why is this changed?
Just to try to alleviate the general fund as much as possible.
And really to create more focus for park maintenance.
Mm-hmm. $10,000 for park service seems pretty extravagant. How many hours would that be as far as service?
That's the current year.
Yes.
Go ahead. In current year, I know we just paid for mulch for our playground.
Right.
From park maintenance.
Yeah, this is for personnel.
Oh, personnel.
Yeah, $10,000 for personnel?
That's what's projected. That's not, that's not a budget number. That's what's projected for this year.
For this year, yeah. It wasn't that way on last year's budget that we approved, so.
We're definitely planning on using some again to offset the expenses for park maintenance.
$5,000 in personnel services. What, how many hours of service would that represent?
Do you wanna give a term, Matt?
I can, yeah.
Okay.
The only reason I say that is it doesn't make sense to draw.
I just wanna make sure that we're applying something reasonable. $10,000 this year seems pretty high for park maintenance. When I look at the park maintenance and it's like, where's this service being performed?
Sure. Well, I mean, there's other questions too about, yeah, kind of dealing with trash at the different locations and that kind of thing. The only, and I'm not trying to defend.
That's fine, it's okay.
All I wanna do is make sure we give an accurate answer and not one that's kind of a.
Yeah.
If you don't have that, then I recommend that we get back to you and give you a solid answer.
I appreciate that. Yeah, I know that we were gonna charge part of the pool, part of the coffers, so and I understand that expense, I support that expense, so I'm good with that.
And I'll add that in years past, we have assessed recreation for like Reagan and all of those when the service department did that.
I don't think we do that anymore that I'm aware of, yeah.
But in previous years.
It did happen in previous years.
Okay.
Just to comment further.
Year-to-date, we've charged $1,300 in salaries to the recreation fund. So the $10,000, it wasn't a, we project next number of hours, it was just more of, what is budget, does it allocate for that? Just so it's available to use.
Right.
But so far, we only use 13% of the total.
All right, there we go. I have a question on the 2902 fund for the fire contract, special revenue. I know in years past, we were still paying off, I think this was my many key finances.
The tower ladder just got paid off.
One of them, yeah, I don't remember which one this one was for.
Very recently.
It wasn't the planter.
Yes, it wasn't, yeah.
Okay, so the money that was being received on that, that was a tax levy, was it not?
Yes.
Is that money still coming in or is that money expiring?
No.
Okay, so do we not include that tax levy money in the capital anymore going into just firefighting? That's tax money for equipment, why is that not going into the capital fund?
What line are you looking at, Diana?
I'm looking at 2902, about expenditures. About security of personnel and property, the subcategory firefighting, prevention, inspection, other, all the money went into that category now and none goes into capital expenditures?
They might not have anything planned to be purchased.
Yeah, I think they're starting to accumulate money for the next purchase, replacement of.
Okay, well, this, this is, the money now is going under the security portion of personnel for firefighting.
Security of persons and property is the objective or the task of the fire department. And there are two categories below that.
There's only one category underneath that, the other one is its own expenditure capital. The firefighting prevention and inspection is a subcategory of security of person, which would be personnel, what I understand it.
No, the, it won't be personnel for that one, it's got the hyphen other such as the general like goes to the fire department.
Yeah, it's a contract of the voluntary fire department, so it's not.
So is our contract having increased?
No, with that, I just moved the, since it was technically a lease payment, I was recording it into the other line instead of the capital outlay. So 15, that money's there, but in 2016, since, they will come to us whenever they leave operating funds, I just kept the number consistent.
Okay, so that money won't be, to be out as part of the fire contract, I mean, that is specifically for equipment on the tax levy, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that.
Matt, you looking at 2903 also?
2902 right now.
O2.
Yeah, O2, yeah.
That's correct.
Okay, so that's, that's $1,700, $1,700 that we give in tax money will specifically go towards equipment but not to the fire contract, is that right?
Um, in 2903, I think, or it was to equipment, 2902.
Okay, on 2902, the $17,750 that's put out every, every year? That has been paid off now? It's for a piece of equipment. Okay, we're still collecting that money in the tax levy. So is that money that was specifically for equipments going to stay with equipment or is it going to be paid to the fire department as?
No.
Fire contract.
No, I think before, the portion was paid from the 2902 and the portion was paid from the equipment fund.
For the equipment, right, we don't pay, so the fire contract comes from the equipment fund?
But the equipment fund now is included in the fire contract portion.
Because Matt said you were paying, I don't care right from the.
Yeah.
I'm paying a portion out of, you know, what should be in fire contract money and a portion out of the equipment. There's a bulk of pay now. But the pockets gonna accumulate, the equipment portion won't go towards the contract, that's a separate levy.
Okay. The portion, all right, so on 2903 then, that tax levy that was for equipment, is that going to be expiring or is that a continuing?
Continuing.
Okay, so that money would be accumulating with, and what's the intended purpose for that?
Replacement of fire apparatus.
For, is that for replacing 48? I think that was a piece of equipment we're looking at next?
They're all 4D.
Okay.
4D exertation.
Okay, it would.
They had one, it was a $400,000 piece of equipment, is that gonna be going towards that now?
It'd be replacement of an engine and they've already started discussion on specs, but quite frankly, if you don't have a sizable down payment, we can't handle the installments. So this will be to accumulate funds for the down payment.
This was an accumulating fund now, okay. All right, very good, thank you very much. On 3101 for debt service, general obligation bond retirement, for 2016 budget year, we don't have any anticipated funds for sales of assets. Should we not have some estimated, if you're there, would we plan on selling anymore?
The vast majority of the properties that we still have, I was able to trace the purchase of those properties back to funds from the 2000 non-voted bond issue. So you can't see it in here, but you back to exhibit three. And the non-voted debt fund in 3901. And the budget here estimated proceeds is $206,000. See, I believe that. $117,000 of that is from the sale of the properties.
The properties that were previously sold that came out of the, out of this fund that they were purchased through, did that money all go into this account? I believe most of it went to the general fund, so.
Whenever we did the debt refund here recently, the.
Yeah, what is the problem?
Yeah, the down payment that we made or the redemption of principal of $255,000, so we transferred $187,000 from the general fund to the debt retirement fund. And that money was derived from sales of properties that were previously placed into the general fund.
All right. Now, I'm looking at exhibit three now and I noticed that, and also in the lectures myself, the post office is not its own special service. And my question whether the post office should be pulled out as a special service. It's currently in a general fund category, there's a subcategory for it, but the post office is its own entity per se. And we'll get to see a snapshot of its property loss. And I think that that's an important aspect here that we should be looking at. And I know some changes were made that will benefit the post office this year with hours and such, so that's a good thing. Also, the apartment building operation, we still have buildings that we have to maintain and even though they're not getting rented, why is, is there not any, is there the $11,700 that's going out, is that towards the continued maintenance of those buildings?
Oh, well, it's, the expenses from that fund is predominantly for property taxes.
Property taxes, that's what I had today.
And from where we only have, I believe, three tenants right now, the revenues are kind of less and less, so we're shifting a lot of those expenses back to general fund into the lanes and buildings. Because the, there's enough revenue coming into the apartment fund to, to support it and in lieu of this, there are transfers back and forth, this kind of, which is the expenses go to the lanes and buildings fund.
So it's not the receipt for rent becoming into this then?
It, it is in 2015.
So we still have tenants?
We still have tenants, that's where I am, I guess.
And we don't anticipate having any 2016?
Open door.
Okay. And that is it on that. The only other thing I have to say is that my challenge, and I know that a lot of work went into this and I appreciate your time in discussing this with me. And the only challenge I have is that if we could find a way to challenge each department to cut their expenses by 10 to 15% through the resources that are out there and the products that are purchased for use and the scrutiny of time and labor expenses, every little bit adds up, which would help us towards our bottom line. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else have any comments?
Kenny Burke, 780, Green Lake. As far as the garbage collection issue, I always thought there were some savings because Rumpke sends us one bill, the village pays us, they don't have to send out the notices, collections, people don't pay on the hunt. So I guess that'd rise a little bit. I know we're not necessarily renegotiating the contract to have them do this, or maybe we are. But because I attend some Springfield Township-related meetings and we get reports from the trustees or financial officers, whatever, I know that they recently applied for a garbage contract with Colrain Township and Ross Township and Butler County. And they recently got the bids and Rumpke was a little bitter. But they had bills of, when they had to price range, as you could get either one, like for $12, you got the can and also a large pushable, wheeble recycling bin. And then for $16 was something else. But I wonder if we could look into that to see if our prices are in line, whatever Rumpke's gonna charge us, if it would be billed? Or maybe we can jump on that contract currently they have or next time they renegotiate it, go in with another group of people to get a better deal and say.
Let me make a couple of comments about that now, but you fill in anything additional. We are looking at a new contract with them. Our original contract and the extensions will be up soon. We're joining with others that their contract expires at the same time or close to the same time. And the way that it would work if residents paid for their garbage themselves, it would be attached to their water bill and the water department would actually make the collection of that. And we, we don't know till you put the bid out and get it back and who the winning bid is, but it's probably in the $120 a year range, is that what we're, if we, so, does that be, is that in that $10 a month kind of?
The township $16 bid is $192.
Yeah.
I think you pretty well covered everything, but we are currently in a consortium. They have a good rate and that is going out to bid again. Our new rate would go into effect March 1st. We don't know what it's gonna be, but we're going through the, preparing the bid specs right now. And we've actually ended an additional community, so it'll be five of us going out to bid at the same time. And the other piece of that is it is better for the community to get a bid if we intend to pass it on to the residents because it is much, much cheaper than that resident would be able to go out and get on their own, so that is a real plus. And yeah, we're running around a $120 a year amount probably. But we'll know for sure in November.
Anyone else wanna make a comment? Thank you. We're out of people.
Now, I am here.
Well, I'm just gonna start at the end. Jack, do you wanna start? And any comments or anything that you, or questions that you'd like to.
Real Mr. Dries, I have.
Just a comment on the garbage collection. I know even during discussions, it's best to keep it in for now until we get the final bids and decide which way council's gonna go and how we're gonna pass it on. Just, I know it'd be nice to be able to take that out, but just to leave it in as a placeholder until we continue and see how it goes.
Over.
I know that's the intent, but I'm supporting that intent.
Okay.
A couple things. One is I do thank you guys for your input because I think that's an important part of the process. And I think we all really, we all want the same thing. We wanna run efficiently, we wanna make the best decisions we can. And part of that does come from feedback from residents, so I applaud you for doing that. One of the questions I had, and it's a little bit looking over my shoulder, but I think it's appropriate. If the inheritance tax did not go away, where, I mean, how well would we be seeded through the next couple of years?
Can you say fat city? We were running about, if my recollection is correct, about $250,000 in that range per year, the prior four, five years before that.
And we had, I know a couple.
And we knew in advance it was gonna go away, but quite frankly, the local government fund has gone down. I'm not embarrassed to say, if the governor was sitting right next to me, that he's balanced his budget on our backs. And, but, you know, we knew that, we knew that these years would be lean years. And so we had a year or two's warning on that.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I understand that. I just wanna, hopefully, hopefully we'll have a balanced perspective on why we're where we are and, you know, how to proceed from here. Yeah, I think we all, in the book of our children, can say, wow, we did this or did that. But inheritance tax, is definitely something that was out of our control and no one consulted us or if they did, they didn't listen to us. But, but I understand too, you know.
And quietly, it was gonna be replaced when the governor was gonna make some changes with some pensions and that didn't go so well for him. And, you know, his pitch was, is you're gonna lose some local government money and you've lost the inheritance tax, but additional monies are gonna come to you with those changes in municipal pensions and that, in fact, didn't happen. So, but we are where we are from a revenue standpoint, we are where we are from an expense standpoint. We've taken on no new debt since the inheritance tax and the debt that we have was able to be refinanced.
Sure, sure. And we reversed the trend of property ownership too, which is helping us to get some properties.
And, you know, thank God for the folks that are paying the income tax because we're starting to see a rise in the, in the income tax receipts. And, you know, that's, that's hard to put a finger on why that is. If it, is it, are wages going up? Are people, is the use of Rita for the collection and better collection helping? It's, it's hard to tell, but if you look at, on the income tax. on the, um, income tax. Actual in two thousand and thirteen was nine eighty-nine, and it went to ten twenty-two, or a million twenty-two, this year we're projecting a million fifty, and, um, got a million fifty in next year, so.
And then one, one final comment, just so that people know, I know that Yvonne has diligently talked to department heads about, um, cutting back, and steps have been taken. Um, I think it's a very valid comment, uh, but I don't want, I don't think that it's a totally new idea, because I've seen it in action, and we continue to need to do that, and if people have ideas, we should bring them forth and, and make adjustments, so that's it.
Thanks, Jack.
Um, on the full, the one thousand, uh, there, as I'm looking at it on the garbage, um, refuse collection, disposal, and sold for, two hundred and twenty-four thousand five hundred, that's an increase of thirty-six thousand five hundred from two thousand and fifteen. Is that what you're expecting, that that's going to be the change, uh, on two thousand and sixteen on the contract?
Yes, yes.
And that's based on other municipalities around us and what they've been paying.
Correct. Um, with that one, that is, I think a quarter of the year is on the current contract, three quarters of the year are on the new contract, and I had anticipated total expense going to two hundred and thirty thousand dollars for seventeen and eighteen.
And, uh, on the same fund, one thousand, um, the bottom line unencumbered, on the, uh, on the signed, um, eight hundred and eighty-five thousand, um, is that money that has not been assigned, what is that considered, um, or anything to be transferred into that is needed, or how do you handle that?
Yeah, at the end of the year, the unencumbered general fund balance is available for virtually any cloud we use, with, which, with the general fund, that's a.
It's the carryover.
It's a carryover, is that what you have?
And, and that's the fund that I talked about, based on our need to transfer, that would go negative in two thousand and nineteen. All other things being unchanged.
I know that we're talking in a very lean logic, but, um, I, um, I'm doing this if I don't say that I wish we could have just a slice, even a bit more savings, just for an extra cushion, and maybe not as, uh, as much as ten or fifteen percent, but, uh, maybe even a five percent of small cuts here and there. If we were to do something with the garbage collection, anything like that, um, that amount, um, or portion there or off, or anything like that, uh, if that would bring us down to at least a five percent savings, or something like that, that would be, I think, uh, it would make us help do it for extra cushioning there.
One of the things that's hurting us some is the, the property valuations, and, and we have a special lease operating fund, and, um, in round numbers, it costs about three quarters of a million dollars for us to have a police department, which is about twenty-five percent of the general fund and all the other funds. So about a quarter of what we spend is on the police department. But, and we passed a police operating levy, um, many years ago.
You passed two of them many years ago.
Yes. Um, but in two thousand, it's just the effect of lower property valuations, we went from five hundred and forty-three in two thousand and thirteen, down to five twenty-three in two thousand and fourteen. We're looking at five oh four in two thousand and fifteen, to four ninety-six, you know, so, to me, it looks like the trend is still negative, but the curve is not as steep. Um, and so we're having to transfer money into, from the general fund to operate the police department, and, um, the chief and Yvonne have worked on changing some scheduling, um, to make sure that we're making the most effective use of the personnel that we have.
There was a reduction also in part-time.
Yeah.
Police officers.
So I, I agree with you, if you find areas within this budget where you think somebody could save five percent, ten percent, I, we're welcome to, to that. Bring them to the manager, bring them to, um, the finance and audit, uh, we'll certainly do that. But that's, that's kind of part of our struggle and challenge.
If I could just bring one thing up though, um, I think we need to do that, but there are certain things that, um, add a lot of value and a lot of dimensions, and I, and I know it sounds very trite to, to say it, but I think our police department brings a lot to this community. There's not many things that separate us anymore from what's around us, um, and I personally think that that's a pretty significant one. Not that we don't have to watch, we're spending there, um, but there are other areas that I would take tighter scrutiny against, um, you know, if we're going to cut it close and, and not, I hate to have somebody shorthanded and need to have a police officer, and they're not there, so.
Possibly, if I'm not mistaken, we, we asked, we've seen a much tighter cut out from, to this department, so, you know, that's already, already affecting. Yeah, you know, another thing on the, on the garbage thing, that, you know, as, as we couched the whole discussion of moving that out of the general fund, is, is the whole issue of recycling, or, I mean, added emphasis on recycling, and that, that's something that really is a cost control factor for, for the future. And, uh, I, I know that Yvonne has, um, put, put an emphasis in, in the, uh, bid requirements to, to, um, increase the, the recycling percentage if we can. I, I think it's painfully slow, painfully low right now, uh, but, you know, we, we, we should do better as a community.
One, one other note too, that is pretty exciting, um, it's funny to think of this as revenue generating, but the revival of some of the shopping center and some of the businesses, and I know a lot of people up here have supported those businesses, and, and maybe from a community development standpoint, I keep beating the same drum, um, but it is really, really nice to see the support that's happening. That's income that's coming into the village, I was next to somebody today that had never been there before, and said, wow, I didn't even really know this existed. Um, that's, that's something that moves us in the right direction as well, and, and thank you for your guys' support and the community's support. Bud Shack, Destiny's Catering, uh, you know, the Troubadour, and, and others, you know, there are, are playing a part of changing, changing the tide. I'd much rather do that than take advantage of it, if we could help it, but.
And I, I think, you know, our discussion's going to be, um, just because we land on moving, if we land on moving garbage out of the general fund, that, that doesn't mean forever, um.
Kind of like the money we're supposed to get back from the.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not making the promise. Maria, any other comments? Okay, Greg?
I'm just fine.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
No, I'm, I'm.
You've weighed in?
I've weighed in.
Okay.
I've learned that if you want to make that, yeah.
Yeah, just general comments, uh, one thing, as you're mentioning, each of you are mentioning the garbage, I, I did want to let you, remind you folks and let citizens know that the, that you did will include recycling bins. You know, previously that used to be a huge expense, that like, oh my gosh, you know, as time has passed, the, the cost for the rolling bins has really come down, so that, that'll be part of it, even though you're seeing an increase, you will be seeing an increase, your, the upgraded services provided there as well, so I think that's a real plus. Um, and the other thing is, I, I guess I just have to say that we do all, every day try to be in need. Um, you know, when we were at our retreat, and we did every operation, and, you know, built into the services that we provide, I, you know, short of starting to cut services, I, I don't think any of us would feel that there's anything we have or do that's a luxury. Um, and I, I just have a great staff that's really dedicated to this community, and they're constantly trying to think of ways that they can save, that they can, you know, just make a difference in our situation, I really appreciate that.
You can tell you really cut it going on the retreat, because that food sucked. So it didn't really have a whole lot, I can do the previous one.
That was passive aggressive. Matt, is there any other comments, or anything we missed, or anything you want to call out?
With the general fund, getting balance in sixteen, dipping below a blank dollar, um, I just want to also make everyone aware that it's projected to go even further down in two thousand and seventeen, because the sales of, um, properties won't be there to help offset the deep debt payments. So, right now we have a scheduled transfer of three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, two thousand seventy from general fund, just to pay for the non-noted debt. So it's, if something doesn't hap, if something doesn't change fairly soon, then, starting in two thousand and seventeen, it sure gets grim quick.
Uh, yes, uh, the public hearing for the two thousand and sixteen tax budget is now closed.